Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Uh, excuse me. Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilman Will?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rosini?
Here.
Mayor Pitts?
Here. Tonight, I'd like, you know, we usually have a little piece of in our agenda called dedication and invocation. And tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize a long-term friend and resident of Villa Park who recently passed away. Joseph S. Barca, Joe, as they all know him. Joe served in the U.S. Army, earned his bachelor's degree in business administration and finance from Pace University in New York, and moved his family to Villa Park, California from New Jersey in 1971. In the late years of his career, he partnered in business and served as president and CEO of International Trailer Services along with Barry Dennis, we all know, a fellow Villa Park city councilman. Joe was elected twice to the Villa Park City Council and served two terms as mayor of Villa Park. He was also involved in Rotary International for many years. Joe was loved, admired, and respected by everyone who knew him. He gave generously and loved his family, above all else, doing everything in his quiet, understated way. Joe, you'll be missed, and we offer his family and his wife, especially Arlene, our condolences and gratitude for all he did for our community, and may he rest in peace. Thank you. Would you lead us into the pledge of allegiance?
To. Right again. The right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance, right at the door as you come in. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comments section of each item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers will also be able to submit comments in writing, and they should have been in by 3:00 today. Those comments will be read aloud tonight during the public comments section of the item. So first and foremost, this is the fun part of the council meeting, and this seems to have a considerable draw of many people coming in, but one thing that you may or may not know about me is I love history. And I'm especially thrilled to learn more about our wonderful city from those who are blessed to have lived here for so many years, especially 50 years or more. I was invited to our next recipient's home recently to chat about her knowledge and participation in shaping of our community. I was so surprised and taken back at the same time when I walked through the door and saw history abound everywhere in the house. She had pictures of her family, her home. She had photos on the pool table filled with magazine, newspaper, and article clippings speaking of variety of events in our history, as many city events especially associated with the Santa tour, where a group of families come together on James Circle to wait for Santa and the city council to arrive to celebrate Christmas. I'm talking about the James Gang, of course. The bond friendship and neighborly love that comes from that group has made Villa Park what it is today. If you haven't guessed yet, our distinguished citizen this month is Eileen DeSantis. Eileen, will you join us at the podium? I want to thank you for that wonderful evening that you and I spent together. Dinner was amazing. I certainly didn't, she cooked me dinner. I just, I went over there to see her.
You expected something different?
Oh, man. I was just, it was amazing to spend time with her, to hear about all the things that have taken place in Villa Park all her years here. And Eileen and Frank moved to Villa Park in 1966, just four years after the city was formed. And I would imagine it's hard to believe that homes back in that time were selling for $49,000 to $65,000. I can't imagine that. In addition, they purchased their home when the surrounding areas were mostly orange groves. She remembers children riding their horses down the street in Villa Park early on, and she has pictures of houses next to the horse stable, so you'll see some. Actually, she gave me some pictures while I was there, so I wanted to share those with you tonight. Together, she and Frank had five children and eventually five grandchildren. All the children live close by. Joe and Jeannie both live in Villa Park, and the rest are close neighbors. Eileen, like most of our distinguished citizens, is self-made. She raised five kids with her husband Frank, and after doing so, went to school and got a degree, and later went on to law school and degreed so that she could help Frank with his business endeavors. Quite an accomplishment to raise a family, go to school, and get two degrees. I know somebody else like that, too. On top of that, she told me she remodeled her entire house at least once. And she said there were 17 rooms in the house, and she remodeled each one of them, and she had them all redone. Raising the kids, she had a simple but firm rule: beds made hospital style, clothes hung, rooms cleaned; if not, there were consequences. However, she did give them many chances to fix before she offered her insight. She shared with me details of the many things that I didn't know about Villa Park. Back in the 1800s, Villa Park area was known for grape growing. I don't know if you all knew that or not. It was known as the raisin capital of the world. And a blight took place in 1887 and completely wiped out all the grapes. And that's when the beginning of the growing of the Valencia oranges in Villa Park and the surrounding areas. Villa Park Elementary was built in 1889, was known, as we all know it, as Mountain View School, which Eileen and others fought to preserve in our city for so many years. Eileen was also heavily involved in shaping our community and what it is today. She said there were many challenges in the earlier years to keep Villa Park from becoming too urban. She shared photos of news articles with the headlines that read "A Mix of Mayberry in Beverly Hills in Villa Park." Villa Park is a small, countryfied, satisfied city. She even helped to prevent an RV park from being constructed off of Wanda. She was involved in many campaigns throughout her life here, like working on the sidewalk campaign to ensure our children were safe while walking to schools in the city. Eileen has made significant contributions to the Villa Park Women's League throughout her life in Villa Park. She's involved with her family today, and I still believe the highlight of the year is the Santa tour and amazing camaraderie that takes place in a community that she has a big part in leading that tradition. I asked her what she wanted to be remembered by. She wanted to be remembered that she fostered a loving, supporting, caring family, and that one was always able to create a community that was known, not as neighbors, but extended family. Eileen, we're all fortunate to have you and your family as a part of our city family. We're proud of your accomplishments and all that you do for our city. Thank you. We're honored to have you as our distinguished citizen. [applause] Eileen, you have many fans in this city, okay?
Do you want me to make a speech?
I do. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. It's kind of heavy, so I'm going to ask one of you. Pick it up.
Well, you have to know that I've been triple blessed. I have a wonderful, supportive, loving, caring family. I have lots of friends here in Villa Park, my neighborhood. If any of you live in Villa Park and you don't love Villa Park, don't stay here. Because Villa Park is a little tight community. We're unified, trying to keep Villa Park the way it is. We don't want it to be urbanized. We don't want a lot of stuff going on, and Villa Park doesn't belong here. So, love Villa Park like I do. It's a great little city.
Well, we appreciate you, and we have some other folks that want to share some information with you. This is from all of us in the city.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
And also a pen.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Can we get a picture of you two doing that?
That's wonderful.
Mom, why don't you come over here? Careful, watch out for the cords.
Yeah, watch the cord.
All right.
You can stay right where you are.
Don't worry about it. Actually, this is really fun. If you knew the person who normally represents Congressmember Young Kim, I said I'm a pint-sized Brendan Muller. He's huge. So, yeah, be careful with those. Please don't. Okay, good. Anyway, on behalf of Assembly member, or Assembly, excuse me, congressional member, Young Kim, they wanted to present you and congratulate you on being recognized as the distinguished citizen. And it is a beautiful presentation from the House of Representatives. So... And then I'm going to wear my other hat. My other hat is representing Supervisor Don Wagner. So, this is from us. This is on behalf of, well, Chairman Don Wagner, but he's Supervisor for Third District, which is Villa Park. And we are just so pleased. We know how much service you've given to this beautiful city. It's one of my favorite cities. Been around here for a long time. And I want to say thank you, too, for all the service you have given to Villa Park on behalf of Orange County Chairman Don Wagner. And I'll come get a picture. Can I get a picture?
Yes. Hold it straight, please. Hold it straight. Straight.
Close enough.
She's my micromanager. I gathered. I got it. I got it. Anyway, thank you.
Oh, is more? Here, I'll take this.
How are you doing, ma'am?
Oh, hi.
It's good to see you.
I think I met you before.
I believe so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. So, I apologize for the unprofessionalism, but there are a couple of things that I heard that I feel like really stood out, and I just want to make sure I took note of that. So, I might be reading off my phone, but, um, but yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Newton Viencu. I'm a field representative on behalf of Assembly Member Philip Chen. And over the last couple of months, I've had the pleasure of joining the Villa Park City Council in presenting the Distinguished Citizens Award. And in doing so, I've met many great people, I've heard many amazing stories, and I feel like tonight is no different. You know, the fact that you were raising a family of five, the fact that you went back to school, earned multiple degrees to help your husband out, I think that's amazing. But I feel like what's even more amazing is your commitment to serving and preserving the beauty and charm of this community. I'm pretty new to the city of Villa Park, and being fairly new, I noticed that a lot of the city is, um, it seems untouched compared to like the neighboring, um, random, the urbanizing neighborhoods around us. And, you know, I definitely feel like, um, it's just such a charming community, and our office is incredibly honored to represent the city of Villa Park. Citizens like you make our job incredibly fulfilling and rewarding, and we just wanted to present to you this certificate of recognition.
Wow, thank you.
My pleasure.
Stand with her to do it.
Absolutely.
We're all worried about her. Right over here. Very good. Okay. Keep that nice smile. Keep smiling. One more.
Thank you. One more.
Absolutely. Are we good? Are we done? Get one of everybody.
I think we're all good. I think we will.
Oh, you're going to get with the whole council?
Grab this one.
Do you want to hold the one from Villa Park? Why don't we hold the one? Yeah, let's just hold the one from Villa Park.
Everybody take turns holding them.
Next, I have a proclamation proclaiming that this month is Hunger Action Month. You know, hunger, poverty, and food nutritional insecurity are issues of vital concern for all of California, for many people around the world, and we're very fortunate to have Linda from the Food Bank here tonight so that we can present this proclamation to you. Do you care to say something?
Thank you very, very much. I'm Linda Lewis. I'm an ambassador for the Second Harvest Food Bank. Been a volunteer for over 20 years, and I'm here on behalf of the Orange County Hunger Alliance, which is a collaboration between the Abund Food Care, Orange County Food Bank, and Second Harvest. Thank you to the city council and the city of Villa Park for recognizing September as Hunger Action Month and raising awareness of hunger and food insecurity in this city. Probably don't believe there's a hunger problem here, but it, we already estimate that here over 267,000 people are food insecure, including over 64,000 children. The first half of this year, the two food banks distributed over 33 million pounds of food to the pantries, soup kitchens, senior centers, shelters, and schools. We're asking everyone to help us end food insecurity. Your voice, action, and commitment will help ensure everyone has the food they need to thrive. For ways to get involved in this Hunger Action Month, visit feedoc/hungeractionmonth, feedoc.org/hungeractionmonth. I thank you all very, very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. [applause] Okay. I appreciate you guys coming over tonight. I see we have a lot of the board members here. We also have the general manager. I kind of instituted this, and I really appreciate you all coming to do this. I know that we held a town hall, that you all had a town hall here in City Hall back, I think, latter June, latter part of July, first of August. And I felt like, you know, we had a small attendance at the meeting, and I know you guys have got a lot of important things on the agenda that you want to discuss going forward, that you have to do with the infrastructure and so forth. But I think it's very, very important for the members of our community to really understand the path that you're taking, the impact to them, and that type of thing. And I'm hoping maybe you could spend a couple of minutes and kind of give us some vision. I don't want to, I really don't want this to be a town hall meeting for Serrano tonight. I just, I just want to bring it to everyone's attention as a part of our council meeting. Feel free to ask some questions, but I don't want to go a long, lengthy thing because they have future meetings set up to give you all a forum to ask questions and to get more insight and so forth. But this is just another opportunity to be transparent and to help you understand what's about to take place. Because I will tell you, I did get inquiries from several people since that meeting about the water bills. I think they've got an increase recently that went up considerably, and they want to understand what that is versus what the next 10 years are going to hold. So, appreciate you coming. I'll turn the floor over to you, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Council members. The board does appreciate you inviting us here tonight. We're going to give a brief overview. It will not be a town hall meeting, I promise. I cannot follow up the fun that just happened earlier, so we'll keep this light, casual, and, you know, to the point. So, as you said, we did have a town hall meeting on July 7th, and we actually thought it was pretty well-attended. There's about 25 people there. That's typically what we usually have in a town hall meeting, unless there's a drought, and then everyone shows up. So, the presentation is available on our website, it's on your, the city's website, serronawater.org. It's available, it's been playing, I believe, almost continuously since July 7th on the Villa Park TV. Copies of the presentation will be available back here. We're not handing those out right now, because we know people will just be thumbing through that and not listen to a word I'm saying. So, there's also copies available of the Foothill Century, where there's also an article which very well gave a synopsis of what the town hall meeting, you know, basically had involved. But I'll give you a very, very much a summary of the town hall. So, the district has significant capital improvements facing us. The one significant capital improvement is the San Diego Reservoir Spillway and Outlet Tower. That project has now escalated to almost $300 million is what the estimate is currently, and we're 25% of that cost. So, that is slated to be completed by 2029, and that does increase, or, you know, basically increase rates. And there's various reasons why it does that. And in that presentation, there's a full explanation of why or how that impacts the rates. But going up until 2026, the rate increases are 4.5%, which is to cover some of the projections we believe we need to have in some reserves ready for the projects. And then there's CPI, which is basically the consumer price index increases that we cannot have any control over for increased costs for operations, et cetera. And then pass-throughs, which is the cost of water from purchases from Orange County Water District and Metropolitan if we do have to import water. So, the Board of Directors have looked at all the possible options so far, thus far, of how to approach these projects, you know, whether we do them or not do them. And so, thus far, they've determined it's most prudent to move forward and continue on and repair and make this the safest dam in the county or the state, because dam safety is number one. We are in an indation area here in Villa Park. So, we are right now under an operational restriction from the Division of Safety of Dams, and we can only hold approximately, during the winter years, half the water we normally could. This last year, we had to let $11 million of water just go roll right down the creek. So, that was $11 million worth of water. That would be water that we'd have to purchase rather than store in the lake. So, there's money already gone. So, at some point, we will be hosting another town hall meeting in a few months as soon as we get more information, because this is fluid, ever-changing. As we get further in the project design, there's, you know, new estimates, et cetera, and there'll be more information to bring to the community, and we are committed to have more town hall meetings and update folks as that information arises. And I'm open to questions. And thank you.
Okay. Council? Go ahead.
When do, when do you think the project design will be completed?
Project design is slated to be completed by 2024, the end of 2024. We actually look at, looking at draining that lake towards the end of 2024, the beginning of 2025, to get ready for groundbreaking in 2025.
Thank you for coming and elaborating. So, is this going to help? We hear all the time, especially when we had some of those record rains, that the state's infrastructure was not able to hold it, and then there was all that waste. So, for us locally, will this allow us to be able to retain some of those record rainfalls that we have?
Absolutely. So, the design of this, this project is actually going to increase the storage. Not only we're going to make it the safest dam in the state, we're also going to increase the storage by 3,700 acre feet, which will get about 25 to 50% of that additional storage. We're working that out right now, some details. But it will essentially make it to where you are, I don't want to use guaranteed, but you're very much improving your reliability once the, once the project's done, because we're designing it to meet the maximum probable flood event, which is just the safest you can be.
Anyone else? Cosmo? Okay. Go ahead. Oh, Bill Campbell's here. You have a question? Come to the podium, Bill.
I do, I just, I think this is the easiest way to put it on the record. Thank you very much for inviting Serrano here. And I want to thank the Serrano people for the town hall they did, and I watched it. I've read the documents. And to make it brief, since that's the theme here, I have one concern, and that is, there's a chart in their presentation, it's number 41, which shows SWD, Serrano Water District rate estimates. And it goes out to 2033. I think their assumptions are, though, that, given the construction time and the way they would do the financing, that they don't have to start debt payments until either 2034 or 2035. So, there's no discontinuity in these numbers. They go up, but they go up gently. My estimates are they're going to have to pay about $4.5 million a year in debt service. And that $4.5 million turns out to be, if you were putting it back to your own home, about $160 a month. So, it's a, it's a big jump when those debt payments start occurring. Now, maybe I've missed something. I'm, you know, I don't, I don't have access to all of the details behind it, but I am concerned that there's a number missing here. On the other hand, I want to compliment the board. When I first got to this city, the thing that we understood was that Serrano Water District was a jewel within the hidden jewel, because it did provide this water from the lake force. It had the rights to 25% of it, and they're trying to do everything to preserve that. I just worry that this one's such a big number that folks, everybody in the city should understand what the change in rates are going to be before a decision is made, or to reconsider the decision that's been made. And we still may go for it. That's just, there's something missing here that I can't quite figure out.
Mayor, do you want to comment?
I'd say he had a pretty good synopsis. He did a good job on that. So, we are, the board is going to be faced with decisions. You know, nothing is sealed and delivered. It's going to be a continual process. We'll continue to evaluate as we get more information, as we continue on down the path with the project. And, you know, they'll continue to work through it and decide, you know, what the rate increase will actually be over that 10-year period, because we only have in set in stone what we're doing over the next two years. The next 10 years is fluid and can change. And we're also going for grants as well, too, so that could change everything.
So, you know, I've had a few folks come and ask me about this, and unfortunately, I'm not as up to speed as I should be on what's going on. But a couple of questions that were posed to me. One, why don't we just let someone larger absorb us so that the impact to the citizens may be potentially lower?
I couldn't answer that question for you, because that's, that's a question that would be a Laffco kind of a question. It'll be similar to, hey, why not let someone absorb the city, or something like that. We wouldn't necessarily make that determination, but later, as we develop our alternatives and look at, you know, look at the cost... and look at, you know, look at the cost, you know, that might be a, a community decision.
Okay.
But right now, that's, we, the board, have said, this looks like the best decision at this time to move forward with the project, finance it, look for loans, get a, excuse me, get a WIFI loan, look for grants, et cetera, prior to going anywhere near that type of discussion.
And the other question was, have we done assessments against other cities, you know, because it does seem like to other people that rates are lower in other cities because there is a larger entity that's able to absorb cost differently than maybe the smaller one here?
We have looked into that. We looked at various cities, how they charge, their rate structures, the way they charge rates, the way that they, the fact that they're actually, and one of the things we heard about earlier in the presentation that we gave, you know, accolades is that we've kept us a very small community, very non-dense community. That also, there's a, I don't want to use the word negative, but there's a not-so-great positive impact when you don't have what I call dense amounts of meters to spread the burden. Because you, when you're driving down in Villa Park, you have twice the amount of pipelines running down the street to go to the homes that you would just across Wanda Road. So there's that much more pipeline you got to maintain with less meters, with less ability to spread that burden.
Understood. Okay. Well, is no other question? Go ahead.
Just, would like to just remind the board to please keep in mind that Villa Park does have a very large elderly population that is on a very fixed income. And to Mr. Campbell's point, please keep that in mind when you're assessing whether or not, you know, there's got to be a threshold at some point where it's not, the quality of life for the people that live here has to stay at a stable and maintain a good quality of life. And if they're going to have to make decisions on that cost of living, that's, I hope, a threshold that the board will keep in mind.
Yeah, because, you know, we, we've been concerned over many, many years about the complexion of the city. You know, we love the hidden jewel and the way it is today, but, you know, dramatic increases in people's bills and things like that and not being able to afford to pay could change the complexion of our city. So we appreciate if you keep that in mind.
They will.
Go ahead.
So far, it sounds like the board is still trying to just figure it out what is the future. I'm just, just a plain, simple question is, then what is this past month's increase? Where did that come from?
This past month's increase came from basically doing some modeling, you know, financial modeling, you know, determining what level we need for certain reserves in order to qualify for loan financing, as well as putting in there the CPI, which we don't know what CPI is in the future, right? So for us to say, we're just going to raise your rates 1% each year for the next five years, you're going to fall 20, 30% below the, and that's a little extreme, but below the cost of living. So what happens is we can't, couldn't even afford to do maintenance and et cetera if we don't keep up with that. So the four and a half percent that's built in our fix is specifically related to ensuring that, that we're slowly ramping up your rates to, you know, get to that point we need in order to have the, our modeling right and our financing right in a, in a proper amount of reserves to qualify for debt financing.
So are you saying this past month's post only went up 4%?
No, it was almost, I don't remember that number. Where's he at? Was it 10%? 11, 11.11 and change percent. Because, you know, if you take away the four and a half percent, you know what CPI has been the last, you know, year or two, it's been crazy. And so, and so is also the cost of purchasing water. Groundwater's gone up a lot as well. So there's been many impacts that we don't have control over. We don't want to raise the rates, trust me. They, they have a hard time. We have tough discussions when it comes to raising the rates. So it's not the easiest decision.
I, I agree with you 100%. I think that's why the mayor invited your board to come to, hopefully, we can reach different audience within the city. You mentioned it's 11%, but when I, I'm on the same position as the mayor, some other resident will contact me, they were saying their bill was $300, $400 prior months, but this past month's increased to 700 plus. That's not 11%.
No, that's not 11%. That's a usage issue, not a, not a rate. That's a usage issue typically, not a rate increase issue, meaning that if I have 11% rate increase, but I use 50% more water, that means I'm going to be paying, I don't do the math, 60%, 70% more than I did the previous month. Terrible math, but it didn't get my point.
Okay. I, I understand that. So I will invite the residents to take in the bills and whether they really has increase of their usage or just overall. I think people don't really sit down and calculate math, they just look at how much they had to pay. They only understand 300 to 700.
Correct.
So that, that is the math that they are doing in their own head. So in their own head, that's 50-plus percent. So that's why I want to try to understand, how can we as a council member explain to this residence, how, how should they calculate their proper water bill?
I think one of the things that we all want to do is point the resident to the water district to get their answers in terms of what, because the city is really not involved in the, in the rate setting or, or anything like that. So I think the best source of knowledge is, is right there at the, call the number and talk to them.
We wholeheartedly welcome people to call. We're more than willing to help people. We, we are a concierge service where you go, and Wayne Zelker can attest to this, that we go out into a concierge service and we will walk through your whole landscape and we'll actually try to get you to reduce water and not give us as much money, you know, because that's the right thing to do. But if people are going to be just, hey, you know, let their landscaper, you know, what I tell, try to tell people, give your landscaper the budget. This is the only amount of money you're allowed to use to water my lawn, I guarantee you they're going to fix your sprinkler system. But we offer a service to you, though. All the residents.
One more question, please. How many, within your projection, how many more times will you increase the rate so that way we can?
How many, I'll just be honest with you, every single year for perpetuity, your rates are probably going to go up some amount until, I would say, the project's done, until we start getting rain in 2029, 2030, fill the lake up, get some abundant rain, and we can offset the water we need to purchase. That's when you can start, we can start to see if the rates will go up less, but they'll still go up, meaning they won't be going up as much once we get the project done, et cetera, and you have water getting in the lake with more storage, more ability to actually get more of that rain, not letting it go down the creek in a very safe dam, too.
Go ahead.
I'm one of the board members. Can I add two things?
You can add.
Is that legal?
Sure.
Mayor Pitts, Mike Pelley, the newest board member and the least knowledgeable of any board member, but probably more similar to citizens about how the water works. So two things I wanted to add. You talked about whether or not a larger group could take over, and that is possible. But then we would give up our water rights. And I think water rights is something that we all can relate to, especially with the issues happening with the Colorado River and the Southern State Consortium that control that and how California is a leading consumer. We are blessed to have the lake or the dam and 25% of the water in it. If we give up those rights and we're worried about rates, we have no control over rates in the future because we'll be completely dependent on others. The other thing about rate comparison, and this is some, one of the questions you asked about other, other cities, is that many of the cities actually have parcel tax rates for water. We don't. And so when you have to calculate usage rates, there are hidden fees that other cities implement that need to be calculated. So it's not a simple calculation, and that's why it's so important to look at the entire 30-minute presentation or 45-minute presentation. It's complex. It goes back 100 years when we built the dam, and those folks paid it forward for the, for the last 100 years. And there will be something similar. This is kind of a chance for us to have to pay it forward to retain our water rights. So as I mentioned, I'm the newest guy, but I'm also a big, big believer in water rights. And if we give that up, I worry what will happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jerry, for coming. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
The board, appreciate the information. All I can say to our residents of Villa Park is to reach out to you all, become as informed as, as you are, and get us, you know, go from there.
Thank you for inviting us, and it's a pleasure, and we're more than welcome to come back. Thank you.
Okay. AJ.
Yep. Two things I want to go over in tonight since we canceled last month. So first, I want to go over our summary of the previous month's activity, and then after that, I think we all want to talk about the Fourth of July, right? It's always a big topic of discussion, so God bless America. So in the last month, we had 211 calls for service. Of those, 130 were proactive observed calls by our deputies. So that leaves 81 calls to our dispatch center. And of those 81 calls, 12 of them were 911 calls. So in of those 911 calls, I would consider nine of those to be like emergency calls. Out of all the 211, we actually had three what we would call priority one calls. They were basically all in the medical or mental health type response. All those ended up being very well. Two major criminal incidents that we had, or two burglaries that actually ended up in the, in the July, so we're talking the previous, you know, month from now. And we actually haven't had a burglary in Villa Park in the month of August at all. Our investigative and direct enforcement teams behind the scenes have made quite a few good burglary crew arrests for, that have been not just Villa Park, but just the Orange County area in general, because they don't concentrate on one area, they concentrate anywhere they can get an easy target. So we've had a couple of really, really good arrests, and I, I fully expect that or kind of contribute that to, to my guys working behind the scenes. As far as traffic accidents, we've only had two. They were both non-injury. One was just a, a parking lot accident in Ralph's where everybody exchanged info, very minor. And the other was a, just a minor fender bender over at Villa Park and Lemon, which was just an unsafe lane change. Nothing speed-related, so that's a good thing. And as far as citations, we've had about 50 traffic citations over that, those four weeks and about five parking citations. So we're actually going over a, a brief personnel change in our, in our motor division. So we, we're actually going to be having a new person starting over the next month, but I expect them to be there for a very long time, so we should get our citation numbers up pretty high, so. But good news is we haven't had anything speed-related in the city, so. Any questions on, as far as our summary is concerned?
Go ahead.
Hi, Captain. Thank you. I think we can all agree that this year fireworks were the worst they've ever been. And we received some numbers from you from council, and I would just like to highlight for the audience that there were only four reports to the non-emergency line, which was advertised as our main line for reporting any firework, illegal firework activity. And out of those four calls, I would just like to emphasize that 50% came from city council. So, you know, I would really like to encourage anyone who was really upset about the fireworks to really call and report because that's how, you know, you as the Sheriff's Department, you know, go out there. However, next year, I would like to see, and maybe I can get some backup from my fellow city council members, some citations actually, you know, being written, you know, because really all you have to do is just look at the sky and see where these fireworks are shooting up, you know? The one I reported at 3:00 in the afternoon was going off all the, the whole rest of the night. So, you know, if we had someone like really just kind of watching for them, not just reactive off the reports, but more proactive and actually issuing citations, I think that would be a really big deterrent. So sorry, backup.
I agree. That's what we're paying the extra officer to help us with.
Right, but they're not citing anyone. So we, we actually need some citations to be written for this activity.
So are we, I wanted to ask if there's any questions about as far as our activity for the previous four weeks, then I can move into the Fourth of July because I think we do have some, like this is my first Fourth of July as captain here. Like I said, I'd be lying if I knew everything about it, right? But after doing like kind of my after-action kind of research afterwards, there are a lot of things that could be done better by everybody involved, right? Just so you know that the Fourth of July is the busiest dispatch day of the year for all of law enforcement. So you go from a typical day that's 150 911 calls to about 11 to 1200 911 calls a day. And I'm not trying to make excuses, but, and actually, I'm going to turn this into a, a compliment for the citizens of Villa Park because we advertise the non-emergency line. Little did I know that the non-emergency line can be very, very crowded and be on hold for a long time. So I found that out post-Fourth of July this year. But what most people do throughout the county, or what a lot of people do, I should say, is they get tired of waiting on hold, they hang up, and then they call 911 to get through. And I've actually been asked to pass this on from my dispatch personnel, that the citizens here did not do that. But then unfortunately, that resulted in being on hold on the non-emergency line because other people were crowding the 911 line. And we try to answer every 911 call within 21, or 20 seconds up there. And you got to understand that we are answering not only for Villa Park, but we're answering for every contract city in the Sheriff's Department and unincorporated areas. So I really wanted to just say thank you to, to the citizens for not doing that. But what, that kind of opens my eyes is that then we need something, a different methodology of getting that message to my fireworks suppression deputies, right? And I think it'd be a really good conversation for our law enforcement advisory committee. But I think like now, now that we have all the data and some of the stories from the citizens, I think we can take that into our committee and really come up with a good plan for the next, not just the Fourth, but the, and I was talking to Mr. Cohen in the back, the area surrounding the Fourth, we're hearing about these illegal fireworks going off, starting in the middle of June, maybe the beginning of June, and carrying on till well after the Fourth. I, I think, like I said, I'm not going to, I'll be the first one to say that we could do better. But any other questions on that?
No, I have one about July.
What's that?
I have one about July.
Bring it.
My, my neighbor, I think, was one of the ones that called, called you guys because there was a break-in in his vehicle right out in front of the house, 4:45 on Sunday afternoon. And evidently, there was an individual case in the neighborhood walking around texting. And pretty soon, a truck pulls up, two guys jump out, they bust the lock on the door, go in and work on the column, and as they're working on it, one of the other neighbors came along and kind of spooked them. They got in the truck and left. I don't, I don't know if they came back and tried to get it again, but it, the truck was a mess. It did somewhere around $600, $700 worth of damage, if I'm correct. But we, I just, I bring it up because we've got to be aware of people walking up and down our streets, especially if they're doing this, and you've never seen them before. You know, what's the old saying? What's the old saying?
See something, say something.
See something, say something.
And I'll tell you what, if it's not the Fourth of July, we'll be there quick.
But I just bring that up because, you know, we just, we have to be mindful of that and be careful because people are going to try to take advantage of us because we are such a city.
And to, you know, add to that is, what I find is that I think people are, when I talk to them, they're hesitant to call us just because they don't want to trouble us or they think we've got something more important to do. To me, a call to us, it'll, either we encounter a bad guy and we arrest a bad guy, or we have a positive police contact, so what bad comes out of calling us?
Well, this is evidently a gang or something because, I mean, there were multiple people involved. It wasn't just one. But it was the, I don't know, what do you call them, a scoper or somebody that's walking around scoping out the neighborhood? And it's not just vehicles, you know, they may be looking in your house. So be mindful of that. And I know a lot of us live in the back part of our house for the most part, and 4:45 Sunday afternoon, we're probably sitting out by the pool drinking a beer. So just be careful about that. But I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you for supporting that.
Yeah, there's, there's, you make a good point. These, they're very, very seldom do they act alone. They work in crews and they do their homework. They, they gather intelligence. We've had reports of cameras planted in the, in the hedges of people's yards to watch the activity of houses. So people, people find these, and what they do when they actually do burglarize your house, well, the first thing they do is they pick up their camera so they can take it to the next job. So anything that's suspicious, that doesn't feel right, just give us a call. Like I said, there's no harm that can come out of it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any comments from the gentleman in the back?
You have a question?
Are you sure? Okay. I want to give him, I talked to him earlier, so I want to make sure if he had anything.
Thank you, AJ. Mayor, the, this is Elzer here. They wanted to give a presentation.
Okay.
We're Wayne and Mary Silzell, Neighborhood Watch Coordinators for Villa Park. It was a very successful 2023 national night out here at the Civic Center on August 1st. We want to thank Orange County Sheriff's Department for supplying deputies, equipment, canines, everyone who helped. Orange County Fire Authority for their equipment and fire Orange County Fire Authority for their equipment and firefighters. City of Villa Park, especially Mike for setup and Steve Franks for coordination. Villa Park Community Organizations and Town Center Merchants for participation, games, and swag. There was a nice turnout of residents and families, many with young children and some of them new to Villa Park. A fun way for them to meet our deputies and get acquainted with our fine city. We obtained nine new participants in the Villa Park Neighborhood Watch Program. And we also distributed educational material provided by the FTC about scams, which is a problem in the city. The social media site Nextdoor canceled Villa Park's Neighborhood Watch account several years ago. So this is a major opportunity for us to distribute the information that we formerly were posting on Nextdoor and social media sites. We look forward to partnering with Orange County Sheriff's Department to present the annual Home Security Fair in the spring to continue to advance these projects. Each year, the goal of Neighborhood National Night Out is to bring community members of all ages together to celebrate the outstanding safety record of Villa Park and to thank those who make it possible, especially by promoting respect and appreciation for the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement authorities among the children and the young people who attend. With that goal in mind, we encourage them at National Night Out to sign this thank you poster to show their appreciation for the dedication of our deputies here in our small city. It's our privilege and pleasure to present this symbol of Villa Park's appreciation to Orange County Sheriff's Department for its dedicated and outstanding service to the residents of Villa Park. We thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
For those of you who may not know it, this program has been going on for almost 30 years. And a few years ago, when the state released a lot of prisoners from the prisons because of overcrowding and so forth, our, the city, I believe, or the county took on a number, a major increase in crime that they had to face. Villa Park and Yorba Linda reduced theirs at that point because of people being very observant of what was going on. And it's just made a real boost to us to keep this thing going. So if you see something, say something.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
AJ, I'd just like to tack on something. I'd like to thank my wife Elizabeth and her posse for delivering delicious meals to everyone that supported that night. We appreciate you and all of your people. But I want to especially thank Carolyn Reichert and Penny Stansy and all of their troops for putting together some glorious home-cooked food for you guys, so. Thank you.
All right. Chief, your turn. Sorry, folks, this is going a little longer than I expected.
I talk fast. I'll try to catch you back up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council, thanks for the opportunity to be here. So over the last two months since our June 27th meeting in the city of Villa Park, we've had 255 units respond or dispatched to 86 incidents within the city of Villa Park of significance tagging on to the Fourth of July. We had, we did have one structure fire on the night of the Fourth of July that ended up being a roof fire, was not a malicious, it was tied to fireworks, but it wasn't with any kind of malintent at all. It was unintentional, certainly, they were discarded early sooner than they should have been inappropriately into a trash can, which led to the structure fire, which our crews responded to OCFA in the city of Orange and quickly extinguished it. So that was the extent of that, if you had heard any of that. I'm happy to report that we completed, we do annual fire station inspections every year. The division chiefs go out to each and every fire station in their area with a checklist just to kind of keep up on any needs for the station's property, you know, and then contact our property management. I just want to give kudos to the crews at Station 23, they did an outstanding job. Older station, certainly, and the station looked outstanding. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to the crews there at Station 23. September is National Disaster Preparedness Month. OCFA encourages you to be prepared for the unexpected, like a hurricane in August possibly coming up or a tropical storm. So we were certainly busy doing that, but if the residents can, they can certainly visit ocfa.org. And the key points this year is to have a family disaster plan, create emergency supply kits, prepare your home. And then also, one that gets probably underutilized is the 211 helpline. That's a line anybody can dial 211 and get help for several different things. So we just encourage the public to use those and they can help with setting up your emergency plan. As mentioned, we talked about the tropical storm that we just got through over the weekend. Very fortunate that the storm kind of veered off to the east, leaving us with some wind and rain and some damage. I don't want to downplay it completely because I know there was some damage certainly caused by downed trees and car accidents and wires down. But that was really the extent. I had the duty chief coverage this weekend, so pretty busy up in our DOC. We upstaffed, the OCFA in conjunction with Cal OES upstaffed a pretty robust response for the, for what might have come from the storm. They're actually, they, those, all of those resources got extended through tomorrow morning. Once Cal OES helps us with those prepositions, just to help you understand, they can be really dispatched to anywhere in the state, certainly if we don't have any issues here. So the concern with the saturated ground, they, the state made the decision to hold all of those resources. We had a Type 1 Swift Water Team, we had a Type 6 Strike Team, which was five patrol engines. We upstaffed, we had two dozers, a hand crew, two helicopters with additional rescuers, and then component or 14 members of our incident management team from OCFA were standing by basically for the 72 hours that will end tomorrow morning for that, for that emergency. So anyways, like I said, I'm happy to report, we had very few incidents in the county, very, very little as far as significant damage goes. And then also as an awareness for you, we've got five personnel over in Hawaii helping with the devastating wildfires that they had to go through. We've got three search dogs with their handlers and then two incident that are part of a support team for FEMA that are over there as well. That concludes my report and open for any questions you might have.
Go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to thank you for your response to the fire on July 11th at Santiago Oaks. My husband was mountain biking, he had a front row seat to that. And I really think that your air support, you know, which was immediate, he was just taking videos of the air support coming in, was really instrumental in keeping that from spreading further. So that was really incredible. And then I would also like to congratulate Chief Brian Finacy for being named Chief of the Year by the International Association of Fire Chiefs. So this is a tremendous, well-earned honor, and please pass along our congratulations to him.
I will certainly do that, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
As Chair of the Fire Authority Board, she stole my thunder, but it is, it is truly a tremendous honor. And we are very, very well represented by both yourself as well as the executive management and Chief Finacy. And it's just, it's a pleasure to serve on that board of directors and thank you for everything that you've done and your staff has done. And kudos to Station 23, I knew that they would be shipshape, they always are, they're a great crew.
Do a great job. One thing, just to tag on, Chief Finacy, I will certainly pass both, both of your comments on. He is a visionary, you know, you run into folks when he came from his former department down in San Diego, they just talked about how he has this innate ability to see things, you know, six months ahead, a year ahead or whatnot. And you look at, you mentioned our, the, the air resources we had on that fire that showed up, you know. He had this fire that kept to four, four and a half acres roughly, you know, but within minutes, you had two air tankers from him at Ryan dropping on it. We had three helicopters dropping, probably close to 4,000 gallons of water each drop on that. And then we've got the Firehawks that are coming in the coming year, you know. All kind of, hi, his background certainly, air resource strong really is where he comes from. And so he had that kind of vision to see that. And the state's, the state's motto from Cal Fire is to keep 95% of fires 10 acres or less. And so so far this season, we've had a lot of smaller starts and haven't had anything really get over five acres. So it's going really well. So thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, before they finish, I just wanted to, you guys saw the notices on the hurricane and the anticipation. Just wanted to, there's an awful lot of work that was going on and contact I heard from the sheriff and the chief. I heard them multiple times Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We were on the phone on speed dial. I really, it goes without saying, but we are very fortunate to have both the Fire Authority and the Sheriff's Department helping us because they were ready, willing, and able to step forward and they were extremely well-prepared. So you guys didn't get hassled on any and hear about it because they were keeping me informed. But I, I tell you, I was on phone calls at 11 o'clock in the morning on Sunday. And, you know, anticipation, we had National Weather Service reports from them, et cetera. They were extremely well on top of it. And I think the residents are very fortunate to have these two agencies supporting us. And both these individuals were texting me multiple times today just to check if things were okay in Villa Park. So I also, real just also shout out because you all know how much Mike Knowles was on the road during the middle of the storm, checking out to make sure all the storms, storm drains were clearing and everything. So and these guys both asked about that. So I just think that there's a team behind the scenes that you guys need to know about. And they don't, they're not going to say it themselves, but we're very lucky to have all three of those groups working, Mike included, doing what they do.
You too.
Well, I just was on the phone, I didn't do much. But anyway, I was, it was very nice to have them and know that they were on the job because I didn't have to wait for a call, they were calling me and I had to call them back. They were waiting for my call, that's really nice, so thank you.
Cool, thank you. Just get the water from other places, don't take it out of Villa Park because, you know, it's getting expensive here. Okay, Christina. How are you? Welcome.
Thank you, pardon me, thank you, I'm Christina Jones with the library. And thank you for inviting me to speak tonight, I really appreciate it. Our summer reading program is over now, school is back in session, but we had a great time during summer reading program. Our numbers went up over 100% for participation, for joining the reading portion and then also coming to our events. Our team worked really hard to try and have something for everybody and we had all different kinds of programs. And it was just so rewarding to see everybody in the community taking advantage of the library and coming and using their library. Looking forward for our programs, you can find our programs listed on our ocpl.org website or come into the library or call us for that information. But usually, the best way to find that is on the city's email feeder that goes out every Friday. So I really encourage people to sign up for that. I'm, I'm very happy that you include our information. For special programs, we have this Saturday at 2:30, a teen program. It's a candy sushi challenge where they're going to use candy to make different kinds of sushi in appearance out of that. And we're hoping for a big turnout for that. So if you're between the ages 13 through 17, give our library a call or come on by. And that's this Saturday at 2:30. And we have on Saturday, September 9th, a special program for grandparents' day. So kids, grandchildren, the grandparents and parents should come to this event. It's at 10:00 AM, we're going to have special stories in a craft. Our library system is hosting a couple special author events. And tomorrow night, bestselling author Karen Slaughter will speak and sign her books at Costa Mesa Library. And we have another author on Monday, September 11th, William Kent Kruger, and he will also be at Costa Mesa. Wanted to just touch a little bit on resources for parents, teachers, tutors, and for students at the library. So for pre-K, we have a robust kindergarten readiness program. We also have a website, monthly tip sheet, and kindergarten readiness backpacks that include books, activities, rhymes, and songs that are very interactive. For all age students, we have inside the library, computers and a printer. So if yours goes on the fritz, please come and use ours at the library. We have free Wi-Fi, of course, we have hotspots you can borrow and Chromebooks. And we offer reference assistance and readers advisory. We can help match you up to a great read. And we have read-along audiobooks that are extremely popular with the young children where they can hear it and read at the same time, really helps with the literacy skills. And of course, we do storytimes and reading programs to help with that as well. And online, we have databases to do reports. We have online homework help and free online tutoring. And of course, eBooks and e-audiobooks. And if you want to kind of mix it up a bit for your learning program, consider about looking on our Discover and Go website. We have discounted admission for different places, museums and cultural attractions here in Orange County. And sometimes they're even for free, a free admission for that. And the California State Parks passes, there's a lot of history here in California and in Orange County and especially through our parks. And I've heard tonight a couple of special month-long events for September. And for the library, September is library card signup month. So I'm really encouraging everybody to get a library card. It's free, it opens up a lot of opportunities for you. And I always say it's the best bargain in town, so I hope a lot of people take advantage of that.
Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item brought forth tonight. Steve, is there anyone present or anybody that wrote in that'd like to speak?
Nobody has submitted a card at this point.
Okay. We'll move into our agenda as public hearings. Our first hearing is to review the way to, in, wait a minute. Our first hearing is to review the wave of reading in full of ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing, staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the annual, the monthly report that we do, the adoption to allow us to move for expeditious meetings, we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, council members, are there any discussions?
So moved.
Move and?
Second.
Second, okay, let's vote.
That passes 5-0.
The next public hearing is regarding conditional use permit 2023-02 on 18941 El Moro Way. I will now open the hearing, staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor, Justin and Ray are here, they'll be giving the presentation. This is a conditional use permit, as you indicated, for 18941 El Moro. And after the conclusion, just to devise you, we have two public speakers, one of them being, I believe, the applicant.
Okay. Justin, how are you, sir?
Good afternoon, good evening. So before you, it's conditional use permit 2023-02 and the subject application involves 18941 El Moro Way, a 21,493 square foot property located in the E4 Small Estate Zone. The property is currently approved as a single-story, single-family dwelling, a pool, and an unpermitted recreational court and perimeter fence. The subject of the after-the-fact conditional use permit application is a recreational basketball court and eight-foot-tall perimeter fence in the front yard. Per Section 23-17.2 General Provisions of the Villa Park Municipal Code, all recreational courts constructed in the city must obtain a conditional use permit. I would like to provide you a brief timeline of events leading up to the CUP application. On July 1st, 2022, city staff were made aware that the property owners had constructed a recreational court without having first obtained proper permits. City staff prepared a letter to the property owner indicating that the court would need to be brought into compliance with city code. On April 2023, city staff made the property owners aware that they had two options to move forward, which first, they could remove the court, or second, apply for an after-the-fact conditional use permit to permit the recreational court and fence, and they obviously chose the latter. The applicant formally submitted the permit application on May 30th, 2023, for the after-the-fact CUP, which would go before the meeting tonight. And on July 18th, the property owner submitted 12 copies of full-size plans, mailing labels, a radius map as part of the CUP application. The applicant has informed city staff that the perimeter fence is designed to screen patrons of the court from vehicles on the street. Additional shrubs and hedges surrounding the court will not only provide additional safety and privacy for patrons of the court, but they'll also cover the chain link fence for more aesthetically pleasing street frontage. The current recreational court has a 10-foot setback from the front property line and is 32 and a half feet in length and 35 feet in width. The court will comply with all other development standards required in the municipal code, including but not limited to the 50% front landscape requirement. The applicant justifies their application because the family loves basketball and wants an open space to practice the sport. The applicants also state that the fence will provide a safety barrier for patrons of the court from, from vehicles on the street. As required by state law, the public hearing item was mailed and posted at least 10 calendar days before the meeting, and it was also published in a local newspaper. days before the meeting, and it was also published in a local newspaper. I received six letters of support for the application after the staff report had already been finalized and put in the agenda, so if you want, I can read those now. I also got a supplemental letter of justification.
Counsel, you want to read?
No. Not unless there's opposition.
Okay.
No, I did not receive any letters of opposition. And after careful review of the plans and the neighborhood and the municipal code, we are recommending approval of the CUP application for the following reasons. First, the recreational court conforms to land use patterns in the immediate vicinity and in the E4 small estate zone more generally. Many properties, including neighboring property across the street, have recreational courts with relatively limited impacts on the neighbors. The recreational court is also small and conforms to the front yard landscaping requirements. And the final reason we are recommending approval is because the court would have a relatively minimal impact on neighboring properties in relation to noise, lighting, and visual impacts. The court contains no lighting features and is protected from Elmore Way via the eight-foot-tall perimeter fence, which will shield any potential flying objects from the street. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns at this time. Thank you.
Counsel?
I have a question. What was the response by the homeowner after the July 1st, 2022 letter?
Yes, so the owner can confirm if I'm getting any details incorrect, but I understand that there was a permit submitted for a small wall in the front yard. And the contractor, I understand mistakenly, believed that that permit was for the recreational court, but it was not. And so I, the applicant has explained to me that it was an error on behalf of the contractor, and as soon as they received information about what needed to be done, they were obliged to move forward.
So, so the permit that was, that was applied for, was that ever signed off?
I don't think, I'd have to check on that, but I don't believe there were plans attached to it, so I think we needed more information about that.
Because I'm just looking at the timeline from July 1st to April, almost, you know, eight, nine months later, so I just, was the, was the recreational court completely built in July, or when was it actually completely built? Do we know?
I'm not sure exactly when it was finalized. I just know that Bill saw the court at least being built at that time. Yeah.
Okay.
Wait. So I'm sorry, when did Bill see the court being built?
July 1st, 2022. Okay. Was when we first noticed it.
Okay. And I'm just, I'm confused on, so when they, when did they pull a permit to do some work on, on it?
So prior to July 1st, we received a permit for the property, for a small wall in the front of the property. That was the only permit. It was unrelated.
Okay.
But the applicant explained that the contractor mistakenly believed that that was for the court.
Is there a fee associated with the conditional use permit, and if so, what is it, just for the audience's sake?
Yes, so for the after-the-fact conditional use permit, I believe it's $3,800.
And is it the same for if you were doing it before you've already built something?
No, it is more.
Substantially more.
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Any questions? Question?
I have just one more comment. As someone who's always been, you know, very much pro-property rights, I, and I have addressed this early on in my first term, I feel like, and each variance or CUP is completely on its own merit, and you use, you know, staff reports or different circumstances depending on that particular variance or that particular CUP, but I find that we're still, as a city, having issues with people doing things and then later on, having to stop or come to the council after. So is there something else we could be doing to try and communicate to our residents that these are the kinds of things that you have to get preapproval for?
We, thank you, Councilwoman. We do, as you know, we publish in our feeder every week. We talk about, you know, coming into City Hall. We do public, you know, special feeders. We also have information available. Contractors who typically work in the area know us and come in on a regular basis. So, I mean, I'm not, we've actually done a mailer, as you recall, with, we sent out with a water bill last year or a year before.
It was two years ago.
Two years ago. We sent it out, encouraging people to come in with information, asking questions or whatever. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how we can reach out to anyone further than provide all the information. We don't know what people are planning. We don't know when they're planning it. So, like I say, just, we continue to get the permit, ask them to do, you know, give them the information, and make ourselves available. The other thing I will say is we're very quick on our turnarounds on plan check, which you'll see later on, one of our goals. So it's not like we're, you're entering this black hole bureaucracy when you come in and see us. It is a very quick process. So we encourage them, and we try and do every inducement we can to get them in here, but if people are going to do work without us knowing about it, I don't know how we stop that candidly.
Well, I also, to your point, I also have pointed out a few times in my mayor message too, because I think it's, you know, it's, sometimes it's, you know, the homeowner, sometimes it's the contractor. In this particular case, I believe, based on my conversations with the homeowner, that the contractor did not lead the homeowner down the right path of knowledge when it came to file the permit, because I understand the first permit was a demo permit for the, for the original wall, to take it down so they could build, they could build the court. So that was a demo permit, and they did, the homeowner wasn't aware that they hadn't pulled the appropriate permits to build. The contractor could build that particular site. I'll let the homeowner talk for himself, but I went, I went up there and looked at it after the fact and, and talked to the homeowner and found that this is, I think this is a classic case of, of contractor that come in from outside who doesn't follow the rules the way they're supposed to, and led the homeowner down the wrong path, in my humble opinion. I mean, you all form your own opinions, but that's my opinion.
Can we hear from the homeowner?
We have two speakers.
Go ahead.
The first is, I'm going to really pronounce this wrong, and Todd's not going to help me. So...
Exactly.
There we go. That's what I was going to say.
Well, she'll say it again. She'll say it again.
Yeah.
She'll say it again at the podium.
Yes.
Please say it again for the record.
Hi, my name is Joat Sinharman. I live in 18922 Elmore Way. I am the neighbors of the Cosmos family. And I just want to speak in their behalf. They're wonderful people. They are great neighbors, and they have really great family values. And in order with those values, they build their, their basketball courts so the kids can play, and the neighbors can go and play with the kids. It's a wonderful little place, and I think it looks really nice and beautiful. And I think it adds value to their house, too, and in consequence, it will add value to the whole neighborhood, too, or prices of our houses probably is going to all go up when everything looks nice. But I was hearing this conversation about the contractor, and I haven't really talked to them about it, but that contractor was the same contractor with, that my family had a problem with. We built a big wall behind our house, and the wall fell. And that contractor, I hate to speak ill from people, but that contractor gave us bad information all the way to the process. So I regularly can't speak about that. I do believe they probably were misguided in the whole process. So it's not, I don't think that it was their fault that they did it wrong. But I, I just hope that it will, they will, you guys will be gracious enough to, to give them the opportunity to keep their, their beautiful basketball court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the applicant, Charlie.
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The reason we're here today discussing our fences is because we got some inaccurate information from our contractor, who told us to get a demolition permit for the previous fence that was up before, and we did. Going back on your point, I just wanted to say, I have done construction projects before on, for my business, and I do realize I'm not playing the, oh, I didn't know, because I do know I'm dealing with very intelligent individuals. What happened here was, I did pull a demolition permit. I thought I did the right thing, and a year later, I found out it was not. So I went into the city, I apologized, I was like, I'll try to do the right thing. So, when we, when we built our fence, we took a look around the neighborhood to look at other similar fences. We chose to go with, we chose to go with a look that would be the most inconspicuous, but at the same time, one that provides security for my family, especially for my boy who plays out there a lot, sometimes with his friends. This fence provides security for people passing by, from people passing by, and also for cars in case the ball goes outside. Also, unfortunately, lately, there have been some break-ins on our street, and not having that fence up would really make us feel vulnerable. We take pride in homeownership, and we believe we have installed our fence in a way that blends in perfectly with our neighborhood, and actually one that has been an upgrade for our block. We have also taken consideration of all the trees we have. Not one was cut down for this project. Most of my neighbors made positive comments about, about it to me in person, and some of them have written letters of support, which I and my family truly appreciate. We are grateful for the support from our neighbors. We love our city, and we'll never do anything to change the charm of our beautiful Villa Park. Thank you for your time and your consideration to this matter.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other discussion?
I just think it was done very tastefully, and walked by it numerous times with my family, and happy to see his, his boy out there and with their friends, and never thought anything of it, but positive, positive feedback from my family and friends. So, kudos.
I'd like to just say thank you for the clarification. Villa Park is a special place, and as it's a special place, being able to, to be a homeowner and do what you want with your property is extremely important and of high value to me. I'm glad to hear that with confidence that, that you know that doing the fence or the whatever, and then, you know, after the fact, asking for permission and, what is it, asking for forgiveness instead of permission, that whole thing, I'm glad to hear that you know that that's not the appropriate way to go, and, and thank you for once you realized that you came in and tried to correct that, and that's why I believe you're here now. So I'd just like to say thank you, and I really appreciate, as I've always said, I, I go a lot off of what your micro-community says, so when you have no letters of opposition, that's a good thing for me, because I'm not the one that looks at it, and I hear all the positive comments, so just want to say thank you. As a note, though, would like to remind everyone, you do need to, to come to the city and ask first before, but that's, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I'll now close the public hearing. Is a motion on the matter?
I'll move it.
Second.
Move in second. Please vote.
That passes 5-0.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Enjoy.
Now, we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action list on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or public may pull an item from the council, from the calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items, number three through seven, that you would like to remove?
Six, please.
Number six?
Number five, please.
Yep, I was going to say five.
Number, what's that?
Same as, as Nicole.
Six and number five. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve number three, four, and seven?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Steve, can we vote?
Go ahead.
Did it work?
Passes 5-0.
5-0, okay. Okay, number four, number five, excuse me. Who pulled five? Two ladies.
I'll let Councilwoman go first.
Okay. Number five.
Yes, I just had a small correction to the minutes. I had already notified city staff, but it was too late to change it. Under my report from the June meeting, I was speaking regarding Serrano Elementary and Saravilla Middle School, not Serrano Avenue and Saravilla Drive, so I would just like to make that correction.
Okay. So noted. So approval, the motion would include those corrections? So whenever the motion is made, it would just include those?
Mm-hmm. And mine's something very similar. Under my report for Orange County mosquito vector control, it was to reference the fleas, not fleece. So wanted to make sure it was the insect, not the wool of a animal. That was it.
Okay, so do I have a motion on item number five with the, with the two corrections?
I'll move it.
Second.
Move in second. Can we vote, please?
That passes 5-0.
Okay. Item number...
Six.
Safe and sane fireworks sales.
Yeah, I, I pulled this just so that residents can understand what is behind the safe and sane fireworks sales. Obviously, it's the spirit of patriotism, Fourth of July, and bonding with neighbors and friends, but there's also a significant benefit to organizations that benefit our schools, the Rotary, and obviously, football. And Steve, if you could just go over those numbers, I think it's important for people to hear that, and I, and I want to highlight that, because there's, there's been heated conversations within our community that have been anti-safe and sane fireworks in, in prior years. So I, I just, for full transparency, I think that those that are still critics of fireworks need to understand that there are powerful organizations that are well-meaning organizations that do benefit significantly, then pass those benefits on to their, their members, as well as those that they, they choose to be benefactors for. I'm not making a judgment one direction or the other. I just think for full transparency, it really needs to be put out there, especially in light of, of the significant criticism over the Fourth of July. Granted, I think a lot of that had to do with not safe and sane firework usage, and frankly, I think some of our friends in Orange were, were responsible for a lot of that as well. So if you could just kind of go over the numbers, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Just for clarification, in 2023, there was a total of 138,000 in profit, and I think, I won't go over the gross, but profit, that means after the product is paid for, et cetera, and sales tax. That's slightly down from 147,000, eight, 47,47,800 last year. That's split among three groups. All three groups are nonprofit groups. The PFSO was the major benefactor. They had 62,700. That PFSO group spreads their, their, that money over multiple groups. It's not just one group. It's based on a number, and I don't even know how many there are, but it's based on the volunteers from those respective groups, and that's how they spread it up. Rotary is out here, the one a lot of most common with, because that's in town center. That pulls in about 48,400. And the VP Gridiron Boosters is a combination of the marching band and the boosters, and they actually pulled in 27,000. So again, slightly down from last year, but I think if you talk to them, a lot of people have indicated to me that the last two years, there was a lot of pent-up frustration from the COVID. People were indoors and wanted to celebrate, so there's a little more celebration that might have happened then. But again, that's a significant amount of revenue that goes into nonprofits that help benefit the city and the residents, students of Villa Park.
Indeed. Thank you. I have no issues with the, the item. I just wanted to pull that for transparency and speak on the topic a little bit.
Yeah, if I could just add one more thing, that, you know, my criticism was obviously for the illegal fireworks.
Right.
Which, you know, it would just, as a point of clarification, like to also say that the city of Orange has a tremendous problem with illegal fireworks. And safe and sane fireworks are not legal in Orange. So it is a countywide problem for illegal fireworks, whether or not safe and sane are legal.
Do I have a motion on this matter?
Absolutely. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, move in second. Vote, please.
That passes by a 5-0 vote. Hey, Mayor, could I just bring up one point, just for people's verification on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think, I'm going off memory, about 15 years ago, the whole fireworks thing was put to a vote of the people.
Correct.
So the only way the law can be changed is by a vote of the people. So the council doesn't have any authority to do anything, sorry. That's, that's the lay of the land on this one.
Thank you.
So, just so you know.
But you know, can I, am I allowed to say something about the fireworks during this, this section?
Yeah, yeah, we're still...
Just to kind of, to Councilwoman Jones's point, and I... Just to kind of, um, to Councilwoman Jones's point, and again, just spitball, throwing some ideas out here. And even though it's, you know, the safe and sane are legal here, what about maybe going forward, having some of the booster clubs, the ones that participate and do all the sales of the safe and sane, and maybe asking them to help contribute to having that extra deputy?
They actually already do.
Oh, they do?
When we hired the, it was about three to four years ago, I don't remember where, but we've got on the extra. And so we increased their application fee to cover the cost of the deputy.
Okay, well, then I guess it wasn't.
So they fully pay for the deputy. There's no cost to the general, to the city general fund. It's fully paid for by the applicants. So you can pretty much.
I think you were, when you voted on it.
So, just as point of reference, so I'm city attorney in Adelanto, up in the high desert, right off of 395. And they have a huge, why are you laughing? So, so they have a, they have like 15 booths, and it's a huge moneymaker for nonprofits. And they have this very elaborate per, permit program. I mean, they have to clean up parts of, of streets. They have all these obligations for all the entities that actually get a permit to, uh, to sell fireworks. So, I mean, to your question, can we make them do X, pretty much make them do whatever you want, you know, in relation to that. If that be your druthers, or the council's druthers. Or it's.
Okay. Go vote?
I think we voted, didn't we?
Voted.
Okay, never mind. Next, next item, new business to award contract for annual traffic signal maintenance services for fiscal year 23, 24, and 24, 25.
Steve, please give the report.
Thank you. Uh, number eight is, uh, plan check services. You recall, or you all know that we do plan checks on planning projects, uh, building projects, uh, easements, et cetera. We get all those. Typically, our goal, um, which is a very aggressive goal, is a 30-day response time on reviewing those. Um, we don't always make it, but that's, I think we're, we're like 34, 35 days averaging out now, but we're doing fairly good on that. The way we accomplish that is we use outside plan check services under contract providers who specialize, go through the plans. So as plans are submitted, we then make sure that they're, they're, uh, reviewed and picked up and reviewed, et cetera. Uh, we contract with three different firms, Sagecrest Planning, Malad, and VCA. Uh, those firms, um, in submitting their bills, uh, this is all work that's generated externally. In other words, people walk in the door. We don't go looking for it. They come in the door, and we then distribute it. Uh, after all the bills were tallied, uh, we did exceed our maximum obligation on each of those. I think we set it out at 10,000 each, which was a, a low-ball figure. Um, and we came back and our bills were high, but we went ahead and paid because the work was done and generated. Uh, much of this cost, uh, if not most, all of it is paid for by the contractors when they come in. They have a billing, you know, a charge for plan check, et cetera. So we have paid the bills, but we're seeking retroactive approval, uh, to make sure that you guys be very transparent, that we paid the bills that were due for work provided to us. At the same time, because we have maximum obligation, um, Malad and, uh, VCA, we want to increase their contract to 30,000. Uh, the reason we are not, just to precursor to that question, why are we not increasing Sagecrest? Their contract expires at the end of September, so the new contract period, we will adjust accordingly based on their, uh, contract or whatever we deal with that. So at this point in time, uh, we're asking for retroactive approval of the, uh, costs of 13,000 for Sagecrest and 15,000 for Malad, which are the two primary, and then to amend the, uh, two agreements with Malad and VCA for the current fiscal year, so that we don't have the same issue next year. Uh, again, this is work externally generated by contractors, and it's typically paid for by the contractor or the applicants or whoever the, actually, the homeowner who is building ends up paying it, but it comes through to the contractor.
Any questions, council comments?
Question?
Go ahead.
Uh, so that 13,000, um, for Sagecrest and the 15,000 for Malad, that's in addition to the 10,000 we'd already approved, right?
That's, that's in excess of the, of the base amount. So we had set 10,000, and the volume just keeps coming in. So with, you know, ADUs, everything has to be checked, so we follow and generate all.
And then, do you feel that the 30,000 is, um, an adequate amount so that we're able to budget properly, or do you?
Yes, so I think we're, we're appropriate. So if you were to say 10,000 to the 13,000, we're at 23,000, so there's a bump there. 15,000, and we, so we're well under in both instances, uh, but we just, it's a not-to-exceed amount. So if we want to set a high enough amount that we have a little bit of room, there's a lot of activity going on at times. So, uh, the, you know, that's a good sign. I think healthy building is, uh, is a good thing for us. So we certainly want to encourage, as people doing work in advance, come in and get their plans checked. Uh, that's what we're hoping for, and we, in doing that, we don't want to disincentivize by taking a long time to. You know, there are some cities I take six months to review a plan check, which is a very long time if you're building something. So we're trying to be very responsive, and it, it helps, uh, the residents, helps the city.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anyone else? Any public comments? Public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion on the matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, please vote.
Passes five zero.
Okay, Steve, up your, uh, city manager report.
I think with number nine.
Nine.
You jumped one.
Number nine, number nine. Okay.
Number nine is the award of contract for annual traffic signal maintenance services for 23, 24, and 24, 25. Uh, that's, we, with UNX Traffic, uh, it's a $20,000 contract. And what we do is when you, when I get, frequently get calls from you or from anybody saying, hey, the traffic light at center in Santiago's out, it's our responsibility to have someone go out and do it. Obviously, we don't want Mike up there on a lift. Uh, we want a service that handles it well. Uh, so we have a $20,000 maximum obligation. Um, I have authority up to $20,000, but it, it is an increase to sign without counsel. But I think it's important that we be transparent. And secondly, the contract we had was 10,000, uh, you know, uh, was, is slightly higher. So we want to make sure that we're very transparent and, and open to the council, so they see it. But this is an on-call needed, uh, so if a, whatever light goes out or whatever, we, we call them out, and they come out and repair it very quickly, and that's what the contracts are.
Okay, comment?
So humor me, I mean, we still have the same number of traffic signals, so what changes to make it more expensive?
The cost of labor for them to come out and do it, because candidly, these are off-hours when they come out. We don't, we don't say, well, it's Saturday, come out Sunday, come out Monday, wait till the workday. We want them out within a certain timeframe. So they're all going to pay premium, whatever that may be. And, you know, that, we're, we're, like, again, it's a maximum obligation. So we're just like in the last contract, setting a, a bar high enough that we can live within that rate, and then we'll come in under that very definitely.
Questions, comments? Anything from the public?
No, sir.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved in second, please vote.
Passes five zero.
Okay. Steve? Your report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the monthly report. Uh, you see all the items there. Uh, I have answered any questions. Just a real quick update. We are doing a, as you were, I've reported last, uh, meeting, that we had, um, statutory compliance on our housing element. Uh, the next element we have to do is bring our, our zoning up to it. So we did an RFP, and we'll be coming back to the council to have a firm that will follow up and help us do that, because there's a lot of work involved, et cetera. Uh, and we don't have, uh, the in-house, ex, in-house resources. We have the expertise, but not the resources to do all the work that's required, uh, and a general plan update. So just FYI, uh, we're hoping that the next council meeting will come back with the contract, and actually coincides with our contract for planning services itself. Uh, so we've actually, uh, went out with an RFP that allows people to bid for both planning and for the housing element, or separately, should they want to do one, you know, their resources preclude them from doing both. Uh, that should come back in our, in our September meeting, and we'll move forward on that, and, uh, that's going. And, um, everything else, we're, again, uh, we're just, we got through the, what do you call it, the hurricane yesterday, last weekend. So, um, I thank all of you for being available, and not just all of you calling me 15 times and saying, what's going on now? But we were very fortunate. We, uh, had very minimal damage. Uh, so we're, Mike's complaining about the needles, but, oh, well. Uh, and it did delay our striping, the finishing of striping a little bit, because the, the pavement's wet and all that. But, uh, we will get that done within the next week or two. You'll see that all being completed and our pavement project done.
Cool.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, anything? Okay, now it's time for council member meeting attendance reports. Let's start with Vector Control, Mosquito and Vector.
Thank you. So, um, this is a summary of the board meeting we had on Thursday, August 17th. There was no meeting in July because they were doing, uh, upgrades to the boardroom. So, uh, we had a presentation from Orange County Waste and Recycling to discuss the organic waste program, that, that SB 1383, and how it relates to vectors. Because the longer you let all the food sit in that special little container, um, there were concerns that it was, um, causing rats and rodents and marsupials to come and, um, visit properties, um, more frequently. So, um, they had done some research, and the main takeaway was that the organics program in Orange County, it's beginning in stages with, um, many jurisdictions, some just starting. We've already started. Um, uh, State of California is requiring that the, they, you know, separate out the organic waste. And the presenter said that at this time, there was no known correlation between the organic program and any increase in vectors. So if that changes, if you're somebody that's noticing that you're getting a lot of critters trying to, um, come into your dedicated waste, um, food waste recycling, then, then, um, you should definitely call, um, Orange County Vector, and they can record that. But as of now, they're saying that there wasn't any increase so far. Um, second presentation, uh, was about flea-borne typhus. Um, Orange County has seen an increase in flea-borne typhus cases every year with the increase in human cases. The district has developed, um, a response to address, to address higher-risk areas such as public spaces, and investigating human cases and investigating areas that fleas have tested positive for flea-borne typhus. And so they're putting together a dedicated response, typhus response team. Um, the recent storm, tropical storm hurricane, um, has left a lot of standing water. And with the humidity and the heat, there's going to be, um, a lot of breeding of the mosquitoes. So another reminder about making sure you tiptoss, take action, check everything from like your barbecue covers to kids' toys, um, even in like the, the leaves of the bromeliads. So, um, very important, because they're going to, you're going to see a, a boost of mosquito activity in the next couple of weeks. And for human West Nile virus, um, human cases, there are 14 cases in the state of California, but none in Orange County, which is good. And then for, um, typhus, um, we have, um, 11 cases of flea-borne typhus in Orange County. So one in Anaheim, four in Garden Grove, one in Mission Viejo, two in Orange, two in Santa Ana, and one in Westminster. Um, and that has increased from, I think it was nine or seven back in June. So, um, really be aware of the, the fleas and make sure you do the, um, you know, those, those topical or, um, oral, uh, tick and flea medicines. So, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Jordan, I wasn't able to attend the board meeting. Sanitation?
Uh, the sanitation board meeting, it was fairly quick. That was my first experience. So it was good. Um, they did discuss about the compensation for the direct, the executive director, I think that's his title. Yeah, so they did discuss that, but they, um, they will bring that back, uh, for the following meetings. So outside of that, nothing really significant to report.
Yeah, I think it's on the agenda for this month.
Okay.
Tomorrow night's the meeting, so I'll, I'll attend that one. But thank you for doing that. Our authority?
Thank you, Mayor. We are dark, uh, in August, both for budget and finance, executive, as well as a regular session. Um, but in July, we did have budget and finance, which unfortunately I could not attend due to a work conflict. But it was a very light agenda, and the topic, main topic of the conversation was pre-funding capital improvement program expenditures, significant ones such as the purchase of helicopters, which are in the neighborhood of 70-plus million dollars if you buy two. So, um, that is a, a work in progress and still an ongoing conversation. And then the general board meetings, uh, we had as well, and that dealt with, bear with me one second, let me grab my notes. Um, a, the, the main discussion, uh, calendar item was, uh, a request for proposal, um, for a consultant to look at ambulance services, uh, in Orange County, um, to see if there's some way that OCA, OCFA can assist with, um, better, uh, services as well as, um, hopefully, um, recuperating costs. Um, and, uh, so it's a win-win for both the companies that are trying to provide the service, as well as the taxpayers who are calling 911 and hoping to get, um, an ambulance there within an appropriate amount of time. And at the same time, being fair to ambulance, excuse me, the ambulance companies that, um, sometimes have, uh, well, let's just say, challenging timelines that perhaps are a bit unrealistic, given the nature of the calls. So, um, that was approved. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, library advisory board was dark, did not meet. Uh, s, city district schools?
Um, well, we were also dark, um, and we haven't had a, um, a meeting yet, and we won't for August. But I do have a couple pieces of information for our community. So school at all of our four Villa Park schools started last week. Um, so please be sure to be extra careful when driving around the schools, as our parents get used to the drop-off pickup routine. And the storm drain work in the Villa Park High School parking lot that caused the major traffic congestion has been completed, and just in time, with all the rain we got. Um, so the access to the parking lot from Santiago Boulevard has been opened back up, and the administration at Villa Park High School appreciates the residents' patience and support during this process. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, law enforcement advisory?
We had a meeting back on June 28th, and of the significant topics, there have been a, a few meetings, uh, that discussed with, that discussed the potential use of license plate reader cameras within the community and surrounding the community to better assist law enforcement. And that item may be coming before the, uh, city council here in the near future. Steve, I don't know if you wanted to touch on that a little bit.
Yeah, we, uh, have been working with the sheriff. Uh, we've talked about doing some public workshops so that they have some opportunities. And I believe Leac asked for something in the, uh, early fall era. So in talking to it, we've had some discussions, uh, so with the sheriff and, um, trying to work around, because potentially it might be difficult to have one of the vendors make a presentation and then have to bid on it. So we're, we're kind of working around that a little bit. Uh, so we're setting something up right now. I'm working with Captain Mattella to set a date specific.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, community service foundation?
The foundation did not have July meeting, um, but they did have, I want to mention, uh, they had a very successful Fourth of July parade and also the, uh, concert in the park. So, uh, we will resume tomorrow meeting, and I will report back.
Thank you. Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
Bridges?
No meeting.
Senior citizens?
There was a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so for, for, um, uh, senior citizens advisory, there's usually two meetings. There's the General SCAC, uh, Senior Citizens Advisory Council, and then there's the Housing and Transportation that I'm the chair of. So I'm going to do this in two parts. So the first one with the Housing and Transportation, um, we got a very, um, comprehensive presentation from, um, Eric Ainsley, who's, uh, works with, um, Orange County Office on Aging Veterans Services. And I was amazed, and he focused it, it's on veterans, but he focused it on, on our seniors or our older adults, um, who happen to be veterans also. But, um, the amount of services, information, availability for, um, funds, money, financing, whatever, that, that vets may not realize that they have, and all they got to do is make one phone call, um, to the Office on Aging, um, Orange County Community Services Department, um, Veterans Affairs Office. And they just start off by getting registered in the system, and, and it's to the point where there was a gentleman who, um, didn't know that he was a Medal of Valor recipient. And he went to just, um, find some services, um, some actual education credits for his, um, grandchild that was going off to college, that, um, he, the grandchild was eligible for. And when they, people do what they do in that office, they found out that he actually had, um, uh, an award waiting for him, and so they were able to mail it to him. So I encourage all, um, older individuals, all veterans, to, to call that office. And then, um, there is, um, the Housing Community Development is having a Veterans Virtual Career Fair. So one of the things they pride themselves on is, um, even if you're considered disabled, because let's say that you, um, you know, are paralyzed or, or have some other, um, wound effect from, from your service, there are other jobs, and so they're very big on training you for some of these other career paths. So we'll put this in the, um, in the feeder. I'll send it to Steve. And there's a QR code. And there's a QR code, and it's on August 22nd at 2023, August 22nd of 2023, from 11 to 1. So that's that. And then one of the things that we talked about with General SCAC is dementia. And so some people get confused with what's the difference between Alzheimer's and what's dementia. So I'm going to relate it like this. So if I, if I say the word cancer, you know that cancer can be prostate, breast, lung, all sorts, right? So dementia is the umbrella like cancer is, whereas Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, all these different subsets are underneath, like you would have your specific cancers. And one of the things that they're finding, they, the Alzheimer's people that are amazing at what they do, is this dementia care aware. And so what they're finding is, and I'm not an expert on this, and I'll do my best, that the symptoms of perhaps going down the dementia path may be there much sooner than everybody realizes. And so walking into the room and forgetting where you put your keys, that's not necessarily a sign of, you know, dementia, because you can picture the keys, or you know it was something that you needed to get to your, it's, it's when you completely go in the room and can't remember anything. But what they're trying to do is doctors are, in medical school, are given a brief, I don't know, lesson on dementia care aware. It's a training and support program that empowers the primary care providers to be able to interact with patients earlier on. So what they're asking is that when you, the next time you, you, me, whoever goes to our primary care physicians, ask the physician if they are aware of, of the DCA program, which is dementia care aware. So then that way, it starts your chart sooner, because although it's not curable, you can, you can prolong and extend some of these events and problems that happen that you may think is just part of aging, when it's really not. And just some tidbits, California has the largest dementia population in the country, and Orange County is aging faster than anywhere in the USA. So us identifying and, and supporting our older adults with, you know, dementia and dementia degenerative diseases is going to be more in the forefront in the next coming years than it is now. So that was it.
My annual checkup at Kaiser, they put me through some regimens to test me.
Good. Good. That's ex, that's excellent.
Thank you. Now we'll hear individual coun, council member information. Any, we'll start with Councilwoman Jones.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank all of our Orange County agencies, especially Alert OC, OC Public Works, OC Parks, Southern California Edison, Orange County Sheriffs, and the Orange County Fire Authority for giving out timely information and valuable resources, such as sandbags, out to our community. I would particularly like to thank our Villa Park City staff, and Mike Knowles as well. And they also sent out information directly to our residents via email and Instagram. And then Mike, of course, did all his valuable work. I noticed the difference today, just in two hours, being out on the streets with what he did today. So that's amazing. I attended the parade from the foundation on the Fourth of July, and would just like to thank the foundation for another great event. I also attended the Serrano Water District Town Hall meeting on July 6th. That's what's discussed earlier, and I really appreciate everything that they have done to get this information out to our residents. So if you did not attend, I really encourage you to watch the presentation. Since yesterday was National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day, I would like to give a big thank you as well to Supervisor Chairman Don Wagner for the opioid town hall that he hosted at Santiago Canyon College on July 20th. If you missed it, the Orange County Healthcare Agency, who partnered with the chairman on this presentation, now offers free drop-in events. So you can get free Narcan just by stopping by. I have the flyer, and Steve, if I could send it to you to attach to the feeder. They're held at two locations in Anaheim, and so you can just go get the education and get Narcan to keep around your home. So thank you again to the foundation for another great event, the concert in the Villa Park, which was held on July 21st. Everyone had a great time listening to the 80s music, and we really appreciate that Congresswoman Young Kim took time out of her busy schedule to attend the event as well. So that is my report. Thank you.
Want to echo Councilwoman Jones's comments about thanking staff and the organizations that work with city staff, the Fire Authority, the Sheriff's Department. You know, early on, I checked with the Fire Authority to make sure we had enough sandbags, make sure we had enough sand, that we were doing all that we could from a proactive perspective to try to prepare our city. And it seemed like our residents had, had beat, beat us to the punch. They, they had, they have done a great job individually, preparing their own homes so that there weren't a lot of issues. And so a, a big thanks goes out to our individual residents for, for taking part in their own preparation. We always tell people, don't wait till disaster, prepare for it, and they didn't. The Costco parking lot certainly, was evident of that locally over here in Norbalinda. I also want to thank Wayne and Mary Silzell for National Night Out, and Steve, and all the organizations that attended. It was a very warm day. I remember seeing Councilwoman Miles there, and, and we, we had a great time, and, and there were a lot of agencies there, the Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, the Fire Authority. Too many, too many to mention at this point in time, but it, it was a wonderful event, and I want to thank everybody for coming out and being a part of keeping Villa Park safe. Without public safety, we don't have security, we don't have a city, we don't have property values, we have nothing. Everything starts there. So I thank them for their efforts. That's all I have.
We're blessed. We are.
I agree, and echo what my colleagues, you know, said about city staff and, and the agencies. So thank you. And then, again, also a thank you, hate going third, because then I feel like I'm just parroting everything. So thank you to the foundation. The Fourth of July, it was, the parade was the, I think, largest one that I've ever attended, and I've attended a lot of them, and then the concert in the park. And that National Night Out was a great event. It's always hot. It's either going to rain, or it's really hot, but it was really neat to see all the partners and the kids coming out again and stuff. And an event coming up, kind of piggybacking on what Councilwoman Jones mentioned, so we're partnering with OU SD, Orange County Health Chairman, Supervisor Don Wagner, and Villa Park High School, and we're holding a fentanyl town hall with training for the naloxalone on September 21st at the PAC from 6:30 to 8:00. And the flyer's almost done, so we'll get that out and put it in the feeder and everywhere. And that will also come with the, the Narcan. So really looking forward to being able to partner with OU SD and the high school and the sheriff and the supervisor to bring that to our community. So that's September 21st, Thursday. I want to check now to make sure, because I've got so many other things going on. Yes, September 21st, 6:30 to 8:30 at Villa Park High School and the PAC in the Performing Arts Center. And that's it.
Cool, thank you. Councilwoman Wu?
I, I wouldn't want to repeat everything that, what he say, but I just want to wish all the family out there who has kids, have a wonderful academic year, and be safe, be cautious when you're dropping off the kids. They are our future, so let's not hit them or damage them. But outside of that, enjoy the fall that's coming up, and just, you know, have a wonderful night.
Thank you. I, I want to add one thing about the, the fentanyl seminar, because I attended that too. And I have to say that if you're a parent in Villa Park or anyplace, I encourage you to go to this event and, and re-educate yourself on what's going on, because I'll tell you, it's, it's at epidemic levels, and we, as parents, have to be mindful of what our kids are going through, what they see, what they hear, what they have access to. And please, get, get the Narcan. All of us should have some of that, no matter what, in our households, because not, in all, not in all cases do they actually adjust something on their own. In some cases, it's unbeknownst to them that they're doing it, and they could go into a, a spell, and that Narcan is, is very good at reviving someone. So it is a crisis right now. I was disappointed at the last one, that we didn't have more people there. So I want to encourage as many people as possible, especially parents, to come to this event and be present, and listen, and learn, and walk away with the tools that can help, you know, save lives. Okay? So appreciate it, everybody. Thank you. I'll now adjourn the meeting to the next race, next regular city council meeting on September the 26th at 6:30 PM. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening, and stay safe.